So, welcome to the work session for Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees. Today is Monday, March 14. First item on our agenda is an update on the farm market plans and their plan to relocate to the other end of the plaza. So, can you folks see that? So, bottom line here is that in anticipation of the future work for the Manville Road Project and closing the slip lane, effective, and you'll tell me if I'm wrong, Rogan and Bates, April 2, is that your?
Yes.
Effective April 2, the plan is to move to the south end of the plaza with a layout of the sort you see on your screen right now. We're in the midst with Jeff and Mario and their team to move the sheds and to create a stage and sitting area down here at the Bedford Road end of the plaza. At the other end of the plaza, this is the existing curb cut, but on the days of the farm market, it would be one-way, not two-way. And essentially, the parking that used to be at the south end is switched to the north end. Jeff is going to cut a new break in the median in this location, again, in anticipation of what will ultimately close the slip lane. The slip lane is not closed effective April 2. Folks can still depart as they always did out to Manville via the slip lane, and all of this parking remains available, but you would also have the opportunity to exit at this location. This is the location, the curb cut, that Jeff has set up at the point at which the slip lane is closed, and this piece of the parking area is a dead end, two-way to come back to exit here. Remain in question, Eric, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, exactly what kind of logistics space the contractor may seek when they come and begin the work of the Manville Road Project, which we're close to signing a contract for, with the thought that they might start the next several months, certainly, right?
Right, right. Yeah, we're still waiting to award the bid. It's DOT world, they're getting hung up in. One of their subcontractors needs to renew their certification with the DOT, and that's what we're waiting on right now.
Nice. So, moving from the current arrangement where the farm market starts at the slip lane and comes down to this area, it will now switch over and start at the gazebo and go all the way down to here. So, it's a change, obviously, in pattern. Folks who used to come off Bedford Road and pull in here to find a parking space if they wished to park on that side, now they'll continue past the gazebo and enter there and park on the north end. Have I accurately described that, Mr. Bates and Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Anything you want to add to that?
No, I mean, I think that summarizes the flow that we're anticipating.
Okay. And so, April 2 is the date when you officially transition, and that's also transitioning in effect from winter to spring/summer market?
Right, which means an expansion of hours back to 8:30 to 1:00, and some new vendors coming in. It's more of a contract start. It has a lot less impact than it did when we were indoors, the transition, because it used to be from indoors to outdoors, now that we're outdoors year-round, a lot of people won't even notice.
Yeah.
April 2nd is the beginning of the summer season.
Right. As was the case at the other end, a few spaces on the street side are occupied by vendor trucks, right?
Right.
So, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
Looks good to me. I have a couple of questions. One is, are both of the ins and outs two-way, the one by the gazebo and the new one? Or just?
They're not.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Are they both, can you kind of turn either direction from Grant Street? In and can you turn?
This one are you referring to?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
I suppose both of them I'm referring to.
So, this one, which is two-way at the moment, is going to be one-way in during the farm market, and this one is, for the moment, one-way out.
And can that person turn left on the Grant Street?
So, that's been an ongoing discussion, and the sense of it from the police chief was no? Yes?
That's correct.
Right?
Yeah, that's correct. We'll have signage which dissuades anyone from making a left turn there, and if I was to anticipate this map further, the two spaces directly to the right of that exit sign you were hovering your cursor over?
These two?
Barrels will drag diagonally across those. Those won't be active.
Right. And so, recognize this grayed out space anticipating the future work, but as of the moment, you can still make this big loop and head up the slip lane. Now, Jeff is at work and will relatively soon revise the location of the median to straighten it out. Recall that this thing curves this way, kind of setting this up for the slip lane. When we close the slip lane, the long-term plan has always been to straighten this out, which creates a consistent lane width on the street side, so to speak, and also buys more space on this side, which was also built into the planning for the civic space. So, Jeff is going to do that soon rather than later, right?
Correct, correct.
And so, this new exit is, will then be the exit once the civic space is there? The proposed civic space?
It plays out a little differently if the proposed civic space is actually built, but yes.
Yeah, okay.
This is, this, obviously, value engineering may come into play here, but the edge of the civic space, as it was last discussed, ends up about here.
Right.
And yeah, in the interim, that northern part of the parking lot, when the right-handed slip lane gets removed, becomes like a dead-end parking situation. We'll keep the, and then so folks can travel down to that curb cut and exit.
Okay. And then on the south end, it's, this is listed with diagonal parking spaces. Does that mean that these will be in place by April 2nd?
Not necessarily.
Okay, that's just a proposed, or where they will be?
That's the final condition.
Final, okay, got it.
I don't know when Jeff's going to execute that. Do you?
No, we've been waiting on Con Ed so he can get the electric done, which is moving forward, so now they connected Friday, so.
Yeah, I saw they were.
Yeah.
They, when they arrive, they arrive with the cavalry, I will say.
And did the gazebo stairs get moved yet? I didn't notice.
That's happening today. I saw that going on, right?
Yep, this week, yep.
So, again, be reminded, for those who may be listening and haven't heard this before, the stairs to the gazebo are currently right here. We're moving them over to this side, which aligns with the crosswalk, the future crosswalk across to the other side of Memorial Plaza and to the future walkway that will have public right-of-access alongside the new building at 70 Memorial. So, there'll be a much nicer and safer pedestrian route from this location across the street and then down all the way to Cooley Street. And we're also eventually going to move the bus station. You may recall that there's a bus stop here where the Pace Bus Stops, we're going to relocate them, and relocate the Beeline Bus so that folks are going to get on and off the Beeline Bus near the gazebo, obviously stopping traffic, but it's only a very short period of time and not that many times a day. And the gazebo will then be a place to wait in bad weather, achieving a seven-day-a-week benefit that it has been seeking since it was built.
And then, just one other thing to point out, just the trees on that northern median are going to be removed as it's reconfigured and then we're replanting.
Right, in here.
Yep.
And as we have discussed many times before, those trees struggle to prosper, and so we're kind of on an every decade or so full replacement anyway, so we'll start the clock again. All right?
Mayor, I have a question or two.
Okay.
Can I interject?
You can.
Yeah, one condition, this portrays Saturdays and that grayed-out area anticipated activity by the construction group. In reality, that won't have anybody there for, it sounds like, several weeks. So, how do you think that'll play out on Saturday mornings? I would normally barrel that off, sort of the way I had portrayed here.
With these barrels here.
Yeah. Is that, is that accurate? I mean, I can't imagine trying to open up those parking spaces across from the diner and, I'm just not quite sure, I hadn't anticipated those parking spaces being open or utilized.
April 2nd, this won't be striped this way, right?
Right.
So, I would think that these four spaces remain active because you could use that whole length. I don't know, no, they're not going to be, they're not going to be striped. This would be the last space. This is the last current space, right?
Right.
So, these won't exist. Your reason for thinking these couldn't be used is its adjacency to the exit?
That and anticipating the function of, the purpose of move, the contractor in that area.
Yeah, but I would say until the contractor has arrived, and it's pretty unlikely that it's going to be as early as May, as April 2. I mean, certainly it's not going to be as early as then. I think these spaces remain available. These spaces are not available because they won't exist, and at the point at which we start to take action to close the slip lane and you can't go this way, which might still be a transition. I mean, just for example, I don't know what the logistics plan is, but the biggest piece of work for the contractor is to rebuild this intersection and to create a right-turn-only lane. It may be, maybe you know this, Eric, do we yet know how the contractor would choose to proceed? It might be that they might say, we're going to start in this area, we're going to close this off so you can't go this way, but somebody who's in on the former commuter side can't still get out the slip lane until we close it. I mean, that.
Yeah, we haven't been able to, we're not permitted to actually engage in those conversations yet, but the feedback from Jeff is they're probably going to start on the sidewalk and roadway work first and probably.
In which case, that may close the slip lane. So, at any rate, as soon as we start having the logistics conversation with the contractor, we'll be able to communicate to you how this plays out, but I think day one, these five spaces remain active and these four spaces don't exist.
And those two just to the right of the new curb cut, do you agree those are probably not a wise?
Yeah, those would be hard, I would think.
Yeah, I would think that. So, the reason I ask for clarification is we're going to do our best to communicate through the examiner. We'll be sending a press release in the morning.
The examiner is right in the room with us, you have their ear.
Great. So, and they've already provided an opportunity for us to get word about this new parking condition. A graphic needs to be set up that we'll probably have lots coordinators handing them out, arriving cars in the next two weeks. But we have to be a little nimble to create something which is relatively accurate to the conditions in the field on the 2nd, and then, you know, as it changes, we can always update it. So, I guess then you're right, that grayed area, I'll make those corrections you suggested. Right turn only as you're coming out that curb cut, and I'll inlay Jeff's anticipated code. Well, I don't know when he's going to re-stripe or remove, move that median, but I'll come up with an image, I think, that takes into account what you're talking about.
Do you think that's, Eric, do we know if the median moves before April 2?
Yeah, the.
Straightening out the median?
No, no, the straightening out won't occur.
So, I mean, obviously, Steve, you're under the hood of this better than any of us are, but I do think that day one, the challenge is to say, hey, guys, it looks like you can't park where you used to, but guess what? Essentially, the same condition exists a little farther along. As the season progresses, the logistics are going to mean it'll change a bit and morph a bit over time, but it seems like the first challenge is simply to say, hey, no problem, everything just switched.
Okay. My recommendation then is the graphic we design, I'll send it over to the administrator and to the superintendent so that Jeff can comment if there's anything that's not accurate, and then Thursday morning, we would hopefully include that with our press release so people have an opportunity to see what the changes are. Can you go to the marketplace slide for a moment? In this case, my question would be, the three Haringhorn parked trucks at the south end, their Dobbler, RG, and Wrights.
These three.
They're on top of a bus stop that was not anticipated to be active. Those can be there on the 2nd?
Eric?
That's a County Beeline Bus question.
Well, hold it, isn't that, does County Beeline stop there? I thought Pace, that was Pace.
No, that's County, Dobbler, RG, and Wrights, that's Beeline. And Pace as well, but mostly Beeline. Would you be able to ship those trucks down?
I mean, I have to say that County Beeline doesn't come by that location very much on a Saturday morning, do they?
Yeah.
Very rarely.
Like, I'm not sure I recall ever seeing it on a Saturday morning.
Well, I might say a bus garage they don't. Shifting those trucks is pretty big because the Dobbler truck is contingent, basically it serves the function of that farm.
So.
The other two might be able to be shifted around, but the Dobbler one is positioned for that purpose.
Yeah, so, Eric, let's talk to Beeline.
Okay.
Maybe, it's, obviously, I'm not there all morning, every weekend. I literally don't remember ever seeing a Beeline Bus on a Saturday morning in that location.
Okay.
Do you, Steve?
No, I actually don't.
So, that doesn't mean we didn't notice, but it's.
They have schedules. Yeah.
Sorry, guys. Whoops, sorry.
That's fine. All of us are being heard through the owl, so you should neutralize.
I was reverting to normal zoom behavior, sorry.
Right.
Just saying, they have a schedule. Could that be consulted?
Yeah, I'm looking at it, or I'm trying to find it.
Yeah. All right, so we'll deal with that, Steve. I think we can make that happen. I mean, we're going to move them anyway, soon enough.
Right, okay, so we can, that's not on a, so we can, I can move from there. And then, I had three questions about our parking conditions, so we're going to set up, I think, March 28th, you have a meeting in which you'll do the authorization to tow.
Right.
Isn't that right?
Correct.
Which is the same authorization to tow we used to have at the other end.
Correct.
Yeah. And the question I have for you is, this go-around, we have historically had that restriction tied to the footprint of the marketplace, and my question that I wanted your input on is, at this juncture with so much changing, if we might consider having it cover the full plaza? So.
On the track side or also the other side of the median?
No, I mean, in, on the, on the market.
The market side of the median.
Yeah, what I called a lot, yeah.
Yes.
So, what we've always done is the footprint of the marketplace, we designate, that gives the authority to tow, and then there's always been an area, you know, the south end of the plaza where people can park. We start the market day with four to 14 overnight vehicles. Some amount of construction at the north end will probably cut into our parking capacity at some point this summer. So, I'm leery about those overnight cars more than I have been in the past because we don't know quite how much parking we're going to lose or gain, but it seems like a great opportunity because we're discussing implementing timed parking, metered parking in this space, which would ask people to leave at 8:00 AM. If that is considered, then it seems like the wrong time to encourage people to park overnight. I think at 8:00 AM, they're either going to get a ticket, or they use Pango, or whatever it may be, but I don't see much gained if we're really trying to encourage them to park at free lots or other lots and see the downtown area turnover. So, wondered the thoughts of the trustees and the mayor on that?
So, let me say, I mean, obviously, that question also dovetails with the notion of charging for parking on the commuter, former commuter side on Saturdays, which was in part intended to create the same effect you just described, to cause people not to park there the entire weekend, you know, whatever, 24, 36, 48 hours of that move in the car, not only on behalf of the market, but on behalf of the downtown generally. That creates another set of problems, obviously, and another set of concerns, especially when a lot is changing all at once. So.
When do the new parking regulations go into effect?
They're technically authorized at any point, we just are waiting on the machines to be activated.
On the machines, right.
Waiting on Con Ed still, or?
No, we're good. I mean, at this point, we're.
And remind me how, what we decided affects Saturday morning. I remember there was some uncertainty about.
Well, the last, the way it got passed was to say we would, that meters would be in effect everywhere in the plaza on Saturdays until 6:00 PM. That would mean that in this condition, farm market folks would park at the north end of the plaza instead of the south, used to parking for free, and find that they were now in metered parking, as they would be on the other side and always have been, but instead of having meters at the head of each space, as you do on the other side, you'd need to go to the meter gizmo, which is, is over here, to, to pay for it or use Pango. Pango, obviously, is way easier. Steve and Peter pointed out that although we have two meter, muni-meter gizmos, the other one is all the way at the other end, intended to be convenient for folks who are headed out towards Jean Jacques and Taco Project and that whole zone, but that's obviously of no benefit to people who have parked at this end and are headed toward the market. Some concern about how long it would take for folks to be able to pay, recognizing that if there are 10 people in line and the average interaction with the machine is even a couple of minutes, that could be a 20-minute wait, which is problematic. So, let me suggest this, Steve and Peter, the overnight parking thing, you know, one of the reasons, as we already, as I already said, for the idea of charging here was, was to try to resolve the problem of people essentially using it as a full weekend parking lot.
To try to help you guys out that way.
It may be that that's causing an unintended problem, or it may be that that's the right strategy but the wrong schedule. Your idea of no overnight parking or allowing towing, crack of dawn is another way of getting at it. We've got people pretty well understanding the rules and rarely have to tow in the current arrangement. Am I right, Steve?
I think there's a car week, but the group that park at the lower end of the lot, they know exactly what they're doing.
Oh, I know.
Their regulars.
Right, and I'm not, I mean, they've got the right to do it, it's just that it's, it's in the bigger picture, not helping the market, the merchants, the turnover, so.
Right.
So, all right, I think everybody's clear on this, and we'll have that discussion in the course of the next week, not only among us, but with you and, and with parking enforcement and the police chief, and we'll keep that conversation going with the idea that by the 28th, our meeting, March 28th meeting, before your April 2 thing, we're in a position to say what to do. I will say, no matter what we do, we have always said, and I will say again, there certainly is going to be a grace period when the parking rules change, so that instead of ticketing people, we're giving them an under-the-wiper notification or whatever we choose to do that says, hey, the rules are changing, so.
Okay. But what I, I appreciate the fact that we're going to look at that over the next couple of weeks. I think there's a couple of things going on here. I think from the farmer's market perspective, what we're trying to manage, as Nicole referenced, we're just trying to manage turnover. Car, you know, you have 10 cars that are parked there for the entirety of the market when a typical market visit is a half hour, now we're talking about 30 or 40 or 50 people who can't get in and out. So, we're trying to manage turnover. What we don't know right now is what's the source of the lack of turnover? Well, first of all, let's back it up. We don't know if there is a lack of turnover, and if there is, we don't know what the source is, because I would guess, from your point of view, the solution, like, let's say there were 15 cars that were parked there overnight and didn't move until the end of the market. The solution for that would be different if there were no cars parked overnight and 15 people came in at 7:00 AM and parked there all day, right? Because the first problem gets solved with no overnight parking, the second problem gets solved with meters.
Yeah, and I, I mean, just anecdotally, I think both.
With a two-hour limit, but I know that that's very hard to implement because we're not allowed to chalk tires anymore. So, I just want to suggest that as we're talking about this, I'm willing with a couple of other volunteers to just bring you the data. Like, I'll go there at 6:00 in the morning, see how many cars are parked, and check again at 8:00 and at 10:00 and at 12:00, and just see, you know, are those cars still there? And did other people come in at 8:00 in the morning that are still there at noon? And let's, let's look at the data because the solution is going to be really dependent on what the source of the issue is, and I don't think anyone knows right now.
Peter, we do know a little bit because we had a parking study done. So, there was data collected, and what the parking study told us was that we had a dearth of short-term parking in the downtown area, so that, you know, that it wasn't that we were lacking commuting parking, but there weren't enough space that, that had a time limit built in that required that turnover. So, I mean, which is not to say that, you know, we're not interested in hearing more, and so especially, you know, the climate keeps changing too, so conditions may be different, but I think that is what we're trying to create, is a situation that allows for more short-term parking, which hopefully will help you guys out as well.
Well, we certainly do, we don't want to create a situation where not only are we asking you to charge for parking, but it's a pain in the neck to achieve it.
Well, that's a good point, yeah.
So, I mean, Pango, to the extent that folks are willing or able to adopt it, is the answer to all of that. Shout-out to anyone listening to our work session, if you're willing to pay a 16% service charge on 50 or 75 cents, it is a fantastically easy and a helpful thing that starts a timer and gives you a reminder when it's about to run out and allows you to extend. So, I very, very strongly endorse that, and I think lots of market folks will start to use it, even in the existing condition, on the metered side, the currently metered side. So, but by the same token, change is gradual, and it may be that evolution instead of revolution is the way to go, or it may be that we just need a longer on-ramp to it. So, let's, let's continue that discussion. I certainly ratified the notion of you guys kind of track what's going on. Perhaps, Rogan, we can put coffee in a thermostat and bring lawn chairs down and sit there at 5:00 in the morning and watch Bates arrive.
I do, Eric. We really don't want to do that. What, what I would ask then is to make sure we are on the same page with what you would like me to put out to the public in the examiner on Monday or Tuesday when those drop. We'll need to be flexible about what we're doing because we don't, there are some things here that are not resolved. I'm not entirely clear whether we're implementing a delay, whether we might consider not having paid parking during market hours and then it kicks in at 3:00 when we leave. I'm not entirely clear on.
That's because we're not entirely clear either.
Whether there'll be overnight parking. Those are the kinds of things that if we had them resolved, I would see that as the purpose of this first communication with the public, which is, you know, there's an entirely new parking pattern happening. We might focus simply on that.
Okay.
Could you add to that communication? Correct me if I'm wrong, but the Rebecca Lane lot is not full on those mornings, right?
Oh, my God, it's beyond not full, yes.
Right, yeah, so I mean, just as a part, part of the overall parking, not really redesign, well, I guess redesign plus the principles we discussed, some of the parking will have to be moved out of Memorial Plaza in the medium term anyway, right? To other locations.
The other, I mean, as Michael points out, the other. The other, I mean, as, as Michael points out, the other thing is we've got.
We indicate on our website that there are 10 parking areas within a five-minute walk. Rebecca Lane is probably, depending on your pace, kind of, I mean, if you walk like a New Yorker, maybe like five minutes, it's a little far for someone to be carrying three bags of groceries.
But the lot, the Wheeler lot behind Lucy's, and the lot, the lot that we, the former Pizza Hut lot that's opposite Southern Table.
Yep, now they're a little closer.
Now have new appeal. So, anyway, Steve, the reason you say you're unclear is that we are too, which is to say we thought we had come up with a scheme and, and had proceeded on that basis, and now you've presented some things that suggest that maybe there's more to take into account, so.
Okay.
We're on it, but we'll try to give you clarity by, I'm looking at Abby Luby, by when? Your deadline is what for your?
Monday morning.
Monday morning, so. So we need to resolve that, at least to the extent of giving you clarity, Steve, about what to say in your press release within, within this week in order to have that mentioned in the examiner for next week. And by the same token, it may simply be that part of what we say is it's moving and it's a work in progress.
Right. I think that is probably, we'll scale back to what we know, and we will avoid those things that are in, you know, are under development.
And that would be a good life pattern anyway, right? Stick to the things you know.
I can report what we know about the B-line.
Okay.
Local, local Route 15 stops once during the farmer's market. That's it. Once each direction, sorry.
And at what time?
Around 10:30.
All right, I'm pretty sure we could solve that. Do you think, Eric, Morsy? All right, great. All right, I think enough said. I thank you, Steve Bates. I thank you, Peter Rogavin.
Thank you.
You're released to the rest of your evening, unless you care to stay with us, in which case we'd be dead glad to have you.
Thank you very much for hearing us out.
Thank you.
Bye.
Take care.
All right, so we're woefully behind schedule here. But let's get a start. Are you there, Mike Newman?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Let's take, take a, you want to start with revenue or expense?
Uh, expense.
Okay, here I come. We may need to get as far as we get and then come back to you. Sorry to keep you hanging around.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen. I have done so.
All right.
All right, so the staff elements are built into contracts.
Correct.
And part-time office coverage and building supervisor, you, you are kind of where you expect to end up this year, right?
Yep.
Overtime's a small number, sick bonus payout, vacation buyback. There's really nothing too much to say here, right?
Yeah, just the only thing in supplies is I'm looking to get two new desks in the office.
Okay. Desks being replaced or falling apart, that seems like a good justification.
Yeah.
All right. Anything on this page? Gas and diesel, outside service. Outside service, graph design to format three brochures. Do you think that's going to bump up a bit?
So I'm requesting 25. I think that should be about right. We, we just did it for the first time in a while with this current brochure that just went out today. That was about $100, but that, you know, first brochure, reformatting the future brochures, that should be less expensive, so I feel good about that.
Okay, and then software support expense.
That's Community Pass registration system.
And the 2021 actual was so much higher because that was when we bought in?
I believe so.
Right. Okay, and then credit card fees have been?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's because, no, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, it's because we bought in, yeah.
That was the year we bought into those new packages. So then credit card fees have been now distributed to decent.
Yes, we broke those down into the different activities.
Okay. All right, so this is the Parks Department staff. So part-time seasonal, you're looking to bump that up?
Yes, well, minimum wage has gone up quickly. Like, in the past, we've tried to get five, so we're looking to just try to get at least four part-time guys to cover the early spring, the summer, and, I'm sorry, late spring, early summer and early fall. So yeah, bumping that up based on the four months that they can work, that would be the number we would be at.
So that's higher than it's been before by quite a bit, because you're adding a person? Is that what you're saying?
Well, years past, looking back at it, we've had a hard time getting the total number of guys.
Yes.
We wanted.
I see.
Or they left early, so we've never reached the number.
Yes.
In the past, they've asked for five, going back to, I think, 19, I don't have that in front of me, but it was 19. That number was closer to 30.
Okay, and now the minimum wage has gone up, so.
That as well.
All right, so parks overtime is about what it's always been, vacation buyback. Okay, so walk us through the equipment number.
So this, this machine, this would be a new purchase, new machine that would add versatility. Basically, this loader has up to 27 different attachments that we can, over the years, purchase if we needed and/or rent them when we did. What we're looking to add right away would be the stump grinder and the heated cabin. The stump grinder, we could take some of the clocks away from our outside service tree contract, which I believe is 800 per stump. You know, we rented a stump grinder during the, some of the nice days we had this winter and got a bunch of the stumps done ourselves by renting a stump grinder for the day. So it would, that would be a benefit to us. This machine could also be used in the wintertime. We could add two attachments currently that can go on this, a plow and a loader. The plow would help us in our part of snow removal sidewalks. On top of the current machine, the trackless number 37, is a 2.5, historically has had quite a few repairs. Is probably headed towards its end of life. This, this machine would ultimately replace that. Trackless machine that we.
So the current fiscal year adopted budget was $36,000, and the projected is only a little less than 13, so some of the 36 you request is arguably money you're turning back in the budget this year, is that?
Well, it all flows back to the general.
I understand it flows back.
The money that's still in this budget, I believe, was initially, when the electric mower was purchased, was a different electric, or at a higher cost, and we went with a lower-cost electric mower.
Okay, and while we're at it, does this anticipate electrification of?
So this, this machine currently, and this is not available in electric.
This device, this Bobcat, right?
I have no electric. I'm sorry.
Keep going, sorry.
We are looking at the future for electric, as far as, we have a Bobcat, like, UTV that is now made in an electric version, so that'll be needed through place in the coming years. And we're also, as Nicole knows, we've been talking with Sustainable Westchester and AGZA about electric equipment and green spaces in Pleasantville to help us go down the right path in purchasing future electric equipment. But as far as this particular piece of equipment, it is not an electric option.
Did AGZA give you a proposal yet?
Funny enough, Nicole, they got back to me, it wasn't AGZA, Sustainable Westchester got back to me today, apologized for the delay. They just haven't gotten all their stuff together. So at this point, I asked her, continue to get me the proposal, and we'll look to do this for the next budget, and we can spend some more time, I think, meeting with the whole board as far as the direction we want to go with that process. But they are going to give me the proposal, she said, probably in the next month or so.
Okay, because AGZA is a consulting company that consults with municipality to help them transition to electric equipment, and we were waiting to see what the proposal looked like, right, as to whether, how, how much.
Yeah, and it, and it keep on me today. I, I don't think it happened for this fiscal year.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, so then supplies is similar to last year. You're going to add benches at the tennis courts. I know that's been requested.
Are these, Mike, are these open to being memorial bench possibilities?
Yeah, so that, that, that was my plan, is we were going to get those, that style bench, which is already one there, put those in, and absolutely could be done the same way, where someone could put a plaque on that and make them a memorial bench, absolutely.
Or an honorific bench.
Or an honorific.
The recipient does not have to be dead, let's be clear about that.
I mean, the tennis, the tennis courts have quite a loyal, quite a loyal user base, so would be a good opportunity, I would think, for some kind of.
Yeah, I think it would look nice. My plan was, you know, there's one right in the middle. I basically put one in front of each court. So form will look nice.
Okay.
Would that, would that be your, your office that would seek donors for that? Or how would you envision that proceeding?
It can, it can be. You know, I haven't dealt with that at this point. Probably they, donors approach Bill Hall about donating, donating, but it's something we can definitely.
Okay, all right, so utilities obviously bump up, given the anticipated and current increases in utility rates.
Yep.
Repairs and maintenance bumping up a bit, but the 2022 revised was 19087. Okay, and you, you say fence repair replacement, batting cage at Parkway, backstop at Soldiers and Sailors. Are you envisioning both of those being replaced, or?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a number of jobs we're, we're getting gathering for all the jobs that we currently have, that we want to hit, and the anticipation, and that started putting this in place, I believe, before, is putting some money aside so that we can start tackling a job or two each year. And so I'm just trying to continue on that path.
Okay, then I think that's right.
And Mike, that's.
We'll get two jobs done for the end of this year, and then these two jobs will be for the coming year. The batting cage, we initially were going to do this year, but in talking with the school, they may want to money and make the surface in there a little bit nicer. So we've been talking, I've been talking with Dan and I, we're the athletic director, so we'll kind of coordinate that one going forward.
And, and Mike, is the backstop at Soldiers and Sailors, that is or is not the same as the netting that you and I talked about? Is it's a different thing?
Oh, that, that's different, actually, and I'm happy you brought that up, because I would have. We are looking at the, what Michael's bringing up is there has been some concern about soccer as soldiers and the balls, when they're kicked, pads are over the goal, going out into the street, and, you know, it's not like children are running out to retrieve the ball. So one option would be some sort of a flex thing. The other option that I think would make more sense, and that we're already looking at, and maybe trying to get done in this fiscal year, is extending the baseball fence that's currently there out further behind the ball to help keep the ball from going into the street.
And I suppose that helps with baseball foul balls from that end too, right?
Yeah, and it would keep the ball in play as well, at a lower level. Going up higher, we'll look at that too, but I think if we, we, something else, doesn't have to be super hot. In accordance with what's currently there, I think that would make a lot of sense.
How many yards between the end of the soccer field and where this fence would be?
I do not know.
It's important to remember that soccer players are running to the end of the field as opposed to, you know, when you're behind a baseball, and that there's nobody running quite that straight at that. So you need at least, say, four or five yards.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. I, I can check on that.
I mean, there's not a fixed position for the goals anyway, right? It's a little bit invented each time they set up the goals?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty standard, but it depends on, you know, we may tweak where slightly. There's only so much room at that field as it is.
Okay, all right, we're gonna have to get to our regular meeting and then come back to you, Mike, but let's just bump through the rest of this page here.
Well, on, on the repair and maintenance section, and I know we have 8 o'clock here, but, Mike, is this the spot where the Rozelle basketball court possible repairs would go on the budget as well, or is that somewhere else?
Yeah, that could go in there, repairs and maintenance. As far as the, I mean, yes. The baskets could come out of supplies, the backwards could come out of supplies, I started Mario and say that. But the, the surf thing, I would take out of here.
And what, what's required? Just roll a new surface on top of what's there, or is it more complicated than that?
It could be more complicated than that. Michael brought this up to me today.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the last, last minute.
I have to look into it a little bit more.
Yeah. Am I right, as an aside, that those baskets are lower than regulation size?
They are.
I mean, that's been purposeful, it's not accidental.
The little history I have is that was done purposely for younger kids to have a better chance playing on the look.
Right. It depends who you ask, whether that was a good decision or not. All right.
Sure, I'm sure.
Yes, right. All right, so let's just finish this page, Mike, and then we'll come back to you after our regular meeting, which will not be too terribly long, I don't think, and I apologize for holding you up that way.
No worries.
Vehicle repair and maintenance, just looking that edged up a little higher as the vehicles are a little older, but still kind of in, in line with where it's been. And outside service is now including those portage, that portage on at the high school track, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's a new, that's a new ad, right?
That's a new ad.
That's a new one, yeah. That's, that'll make people very happy. That's great.
Yeah, the school district declined to participate in that because it wasn't their kids, although their kids use our bathrooms, so I will say. I was a little frustrated by that.
We, we can argue all that about that.
Yeah, I don't think it's worth the argument, so. I didn't bring it up with the intent to argue, so. All right, I'm gonna leave it on this page, Mike, and stop the share, and then we'll come back to you after our regular meeting.
Sounds good.
Thank you, sir. Those of you who are with us via Zoom, you're welcome to remain as we return to work session. But we're done with our regular agenda. Now I just got to get back to the rec department. Mike, are you still among us?
I'm still here.
All right.
He was just like 7 o'clock.
Yeah.
Did you get a little nap in?
I wish.
Yeah. All right, sorry to leave you hanging. This is the page we left on of your. This is the page we left on of your expenditures. I think we talked about repairs and maintenance, gas and diesel obviously goes up a bit, given the rates, outside service. We talked about the portageons and then really not too much to say here. So the, the field light number is going back to its sort of historic number. In 2021, it was lower because there weren't games, right?
Yes.
All right. Not much to say here on this subject. Okay. Here's the recreation center costs. Trying to find something to cut, but there's nothing to cut.
Are you excited about camp going back to normal?
Yes. A little bit of a new look to the way we're doing camp, not using the school as much, using Parkway, so I'm excited to see it in full swing.
Is the, are the, is there school space available this year? Last year, they had all this capital work going on.
We'll use it for tiny thought half day, two days a week. And then if we have a rate A issue, we will be able to be at school for rainy day site.
Is it BRS? What school would you use?
BRS, BRS.
Okay. All right, so we're on the page for part-time seasonal employees, lifeguards, cashiers, et cetera. Up a little bit because we talked about a modest increase in those salaries, right?
No, this is up a little bit because we're doing some more swim lesson options. Swim lesson options, so we're doing group lessons. We have very high demand for swim lessons and private lessons, so we're offering group and private lessons. So that's, you know, part of the rate increase in part-time.
And so the lifeguard training piece, which is a new line, what's that?
We're going to offer an incentive program. We, one of our directors is certified to teach this course, so we're going to offer a course to any potential lifeguard, take the course with us, pay for the course. And if they meet our requirements, which I believe is twenty-five hours a week, and they're with us for the year, we will reimburse them the cost of course. And we're going to do the same thing with any returning guards that need to be recertified. Same concept.
Okay, great.
Bring lifeguards into us so that we're not short and have to close parts of the pool. Just trying to get as much staff as we possibly can for.
Great, sounds good. So line four oh six, supplies, modest increase. Again, people have to realize that 2021 actual was a year when we didn't have a regular season, so.
Right, and the stuff fluctuated, chlorine. Talked to them one week, it's one price and it's another price two weeks later.
Right.
So things are fluctuating a little bit.
Okay. Utilities, repairs and maintenance. Obviously, that's a bit of a shot in the dark, but kind of consistent with where we've been.
Right.
And outside services, obviously, is pretty straightforward. Swim team. Pretty straightforward. So seasonal staff for day camp, increased counselor base pay. Day camp, overtime, credential, scholarship, supplies. So outside service tents, you're going to do the same thing as you did last year?
We're going to only do one tent at Parkway. The tent at Nana Hagan really wasn't necessary, so we'll just have the one tent at Parkway.
That doesn't, I mean, our 2022 projected is, is roughly what you're asking for in 2023? We don't see a savings there?
No, because we have, we're bringing more, we're bringing back entertainment.
Right.
Which we did not bring in last year.
Okay, so that's good, yeah. Transportation, obviously, you didn't do any busing and trips last year, that number is back.
Correct.
And that has to be a competitive bid?
I'm sorry, I said.
That has to be a competitive bid?
Yes, we're, put that in today, I believe it's going out this week.
Okay.
Could, could I ask about the tents? Just because we, Mike, we during, at the beginning of COVID, we, we talked about, you know, the possibility of purchasing tents for use by various parts of the village and potentially the schools as well. But if I remember correctly, the kind of setup and takedown and it's, it's a pretty industrial grade project that, is that the reason that we don't purchase them and that we rent them each year? Or what is the reason?
Yeah. Yeah, and just knowing a couple municipalities, one in particular, very familiar because we're both from Somers, they purchased it and when I asked about purchasing it, their response was the one, the thing up, the purchase one that they own is the biggest pain for them. Very difficult. So the rental option seems to be a better way to go. Trying to see if we could work some that music festival and try to use this intent or share a tent, can they relocate it? And I'll continue to explore that if it's possible.
Okay. I mean, putting up these big tents is a pretty serious, as you know, industrial project and a little bit of impromptu engineering, so.
Okay, just wanted to ask.
Okay. Credit card fees, that's, that's the fee we pay when you pay with credit card at Capturepoint. Contractual services is Northeast Special Recreation, special events, overtime, Pleasantville Day. Derby fish, a thousand dollars. Musky fish hatchery.
Yep.
Okay. All right, any comments, questions on those pages?
When's the egg hunt?
Off the top of my head, I.
You don't, don't worry, don't worry, don't worry.
Sorry.
The brochure? It went out today, yeah.
I'll check out the new brochure.
I didn't download it yet.
It's a good plug for that.
Yeah. Okay, so preschool programs, these are programs at the rec center mostly, right?
Yes.
Okay. And, and these are offset obviously by revenues associated with them.
Right.
So youth programs are after-school programs, that's not Panther Club, but the other after-school programs, right?
After school and a lot of our Friday night or any kind of a holiday, like Halloween party or stuff like that.
So, and again, you're, you're bringing back outside services, that's where the big jump is. Line four twenty-five.
I'm jumping basically what, setting a goal for ourselves that we should have twenty programs each session for pre-sessions.
Yeah.
You know, that's just a goal we have.
Right.
Department will have, and it's something that Mindy can be for.
Yeah, but again, these things are offset by, by the revenues when people enroll.
Yes.
Okay. So the vacant rep supervisor, you're making progress?
I'm hopeful to have the information by Wednesday with a new employee.
Okay, great. And then these lines that follow are Panther Club lines? One oh one?
Yeah.
Yes?
Part-time staff, yep.
For Panther Club, right? How are we doing Panther Club, just as an aside, enrollment and staffing?
Staffing, we're good, we finally got to where we wanted to be. Numbers wise, we're, I would say, we're a little per day than typically. I know 2019, you know, we had a couple of days closed out. But if I remember correctly, the, the revenue side is pretty much right on point, which says we have more people in there for more days a week, more five days, more four days.
Right.
So.
All right.
It's always going to fluctuate a bit.
Yep.
So we're correct works to be.
Okay, great, so the rest of those lines look pretty straightforward. Adult programs jumping up quite a bit from.
Yes.
Twenty twenty-two.
The part-time, this is, we're finally transitioning to Unpock is being under payroll, so they're all going under, under us. So that's covering adult softball and all of our games. And then additionally, any adult programs, paint nights, Moms Bingo, which we're going to bring back in the new fiscal year. The other thing that jumps is the outside service. The biggest change is Moms Bingo, historically has been done on location at Senior Center. We are looking to move it most likely to, I think it's Voltratorias down the road from the rec, the restaurant. For a number of reasons. One, Moms Bingo historic has been a bit of a bring your own beverage. A little workability there.
Yes.
Like to bring Moms Bingo back and not change drastically. So I think moving to a restaurant where this will be incorporated might make a lot of sense.
Yes.
And then also.
People can buy food while they're there.
The avenue of, yeah. Getting, getting a prize at Moms Bingo, historically has been soliciting everybody in the village, every business while buying some supplies. We kind of, from what I understand, we really can't be soliciting. We can work with vendors where we pay for cards through with them, but as far as taking donations, like we have in the past, we can't do pet anymore, so we're going to have to buy some more supplies for some prizes. We're, we're basically reinventing Moms Bingo a bit.
For, for obvious reasons, to maintain the zen of it, but to put it in a more appropriate setting.
Oh, it's not zen.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and how much of that expense is offset by the revenue?
Yeah, we, we've already taken into account what we'll, we'll charge, so yeah, so it's going to take into account.
Okay, great.
I'm curious about the tennis reservation system, is that an app or what's?
No, it's not out. I'm, that, I'll be perfectly honest, kind of got put on the back burner with us being short and trying to camp pool and throw out. We are currently, when we, during COVID, we signed up to use Pool Dues for our pool reservation system that we thought we might have to use. They agreed to allow us to use it for tennis, because it also does tents, and start whenever we're ready to start. I just have to coordinate with them, understand reservation part of it. As soon as we're ready to go for the spring, I will blast it out to the public and we'll start trying to use this. And then going forward, if we use Pool Dues or another service or Community Pass, can have some complaints, that's a little maybe similar price. Right now, they, they don't have a, didn't have a great system in place, but that could be changing. Try to reach out and talk to them a little bit about this in particular.
Okay.
Plus the demand for tennis appears to warrant having a reservation system now?
Yeah, I mean, I've never gotten two, over the years, I haven't gotten the complaints about, oh, there's too many people on it, but you know, every so often someone asks about, you know, the signup system or this, or different ways to keep people from outside in, so this will accomplish that. It'll be a little bit of trial and error, you know, but we'll, we'll get it launched, get the information out to people. And we're going to charge a small, you know, membership fee just to become a member and then they can register through Pool Dues.
All right, then beautification. Maybe Kathy Dinkle is going to talk to us about some special.
Yep, she, she submitted a letter late this evening, but essentially, the beautification committee is asking for an additional ten thousand dollars. They're going to be replanting around the gazebo, removing those curb lines and basically having to rip up all of those flowers. There are some, some projects she wants to dig into and the cost of flowers and all those materials have skyrocketed as well, so. I, I would be favorable to including that, that's something we can absorb in the budget, so.
All right, great, so we'll dig in a little bit further, but that number would be higher. Then the last page here on expenses, contract services, tree removal, et cetera. Kind of staying in line with where you expect to land this year, new tree, new tree planting arborist, Arbor Day Foundation membership, tree treatment for Memorial Plaza.
I thought you were potentially buying a stump grinder.
That was in another line, right?
I can take, I can take that potentially a bit. So yes, I can, if that was approved, it seems like it is going to be. I'm a little hesitant to change that so much because of the, the unpredictability of the tree work that's going on in the village, you know, pops up and it's a dangerous tree, we've got to address it. Yes, they can address that line and take some off since we are going to have a stump grinder with our new piece of equipment.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, so now let me go to the other side, I got to get back to Novus here and download revenues.
Peter, would you mind sharing your screen for that? Because I don't have much.
I will.
You, I must have left it at the office.
So happy to report, as you already know, that having kept you till after our meeting, it's only one page. Here we go.
Thank you.
So you have the distinction of being our revenue producing department, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right, so you anticipate Panther Club to end up next year, or about where it will end up this year? Obviously, that is a prediction, but seems pretty.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see, I think we'll stay fairly consistent in Pleasant, Panther Club is a well-received program.
And then the accounting for the custodial fees switched around, right?
Yes.
Yes.
We're not pulling it out essentially in a separate line anymore.
So summer day camp, obviously running a bigger and more, including the more expensive programs. You're feeling pretty confident about this number?
I hope so. I, I just, I get the sense that summer camp, people are going to be coming out this year.
Great.
I, I could be wrong, but I get the feeling, I've had a lot of people pull about the teen travel, so I'm hopeful we'll have, in the first year we ran it, close to a full bus, which would be about forty kids.
Okay. All right, and of course the expenses are variable based on the enrollment too, so.
Right.
Adult programs also looking for a big jump?
Yes, well, we're taking in more money for men's softball. We changed, so we're doing that in the past, the village got a fee and then we cut our umpire signer a separate check, we're taking in all the fees. So that's part of the jump, along with Moms Bingo will be an additional, higher costs to bring in potentially more money.
Okay. So snack bar rental remains stable, Westchester Food Services is on line to be back.
Yep.
Youth programs, after-school BRS, general youth programming, modest increase predicted, preschool programs, modest increase, Pleasantville Day, back to where it used to be. Swimming pool enrollment, you are essentially predicting we end up where we were last year?
Last year, we had a good year.
Yes.
You know, we're adding a few more programs.
Yes.
So if we have similar. So if we have similar registration plus some additional programs, you know, I'm hopeful.
Yeah.
A few more members for a slight increase from where we are.
It was a great season last year, absent the last week after Hurricane Hyde up, but.
Well, yes, that was true.
Uh, hopefully we can maintain that momentum and have another great year. Swim team. Uh, fees for Parkway Field Lights paid by Dad's Club and Pleasantville Soccer. Uh, so.
Could I ask you a question about the pool? Mike, Mike, does the snack bar, is that revenue neutral or I don't see it on here, so I didn't. Does it cost money or does it make money or neither?
Uh, I would say it's doesn't cost money. I would say we're bringing in a little bit of money. Um, you know, our expenses are, you know, modest. Uh, the fire extinguisher chairs, flu cleaning each year. Um, so of that sixteen, you know, I would say, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars in profit.
And 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 then the the vendor makes whatever he makes. We've we've struggled with this at various points trying to uh, upgrade the services there. And the trouble is it's a such a variable business and, uh, so weather dependent and.
Yeah.
Uh, it also.
I think with the new pool, we could look at, uh, doing a new contract over a number of years where we can increase, uh, the rental fee. Um, I think that would be an opportunity to do that.
And as as we as we found out, having kicked the tires of this in various ways over various years, uh, folks are interested in, uh, a grander and more interesting food options, but at their core, they're interested in inexpensive pool food that that, uh,
Yeah.
big kids enjoy. And so we're kind of back to that. So, all right. Uh, well, Mike, if every department could show, uh, a revenue increase of the sort you show, we'd be happy campers, no pun intended.
That's a good one. It's a good dad joke.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Dada Tom. I'm here all night. Uh, anything to add, Mike, Eric, Noreen?
I don't think so.
All right. Nine twenty nine. We're releasing you from your bondage in a minute before nine thirty.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mike.
Bye, Mike.
Bye, Mike. All right, any more work session items before we retreat to the aforementioned?
We have one.
Exec session. Did I miss one?
Uh, outdoor dining.
Yeah. Oh, yes, outdoor dining, yes. Okay, so obviously, uh, the two places where we have it. Uh, uh, we've heard from Soul Brewing, which wishes to keep it and Vella Kitchen, which wishes to keep it. How about Dolphin?
Uh, reached out, have not heard back in my conversations. Um, he typically will set up one table.
Yes.
Um, I don't think it's vital to his operation, but I'm sure given the choice, he'd prefer to keep it.
So we have to take action in order to allow this beyond March something, right?
Well, it's, uh, actually, uh, the way that the code is written, uh, defers to the building inspector, but he he prefers to check in with the board. He doesn't want to, um.
What about Miyabi and Fat Root? They both have outdoor dining.
Not in the street.
Oh, not in the street.
They're in the alley. Yeah, yeah, they they go through a different permitting process, but, um, not not in.
So, I mean, I I I think we should extend it, although I I say that with the pain point that it's an opportunity that we can only offer to a limited number of places. And we could not offer to some other places based on the logistics of it. Um, but it's worked okay. And certainly both Ella and Soul have made clear that it was central to their survival. Um, and as the world straightens out a bit, uh, I'm inclined to say we ought to continue it. Um, and I mean, what we already know, which isn't a shock, is that it's great to have more outdoor spaces available for this kind of purpose. Uh, I I will say that, you know, we're obviously taking up parking and in the case of the barriers in front of Soul and, um, Dolphin, it's it's, uh, it 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 creates a choke point. I I have a ringside seat on it from my day job. And it's a bit of a struggle, not such that I think we should yank it out of there. But I I do think what has to be clear is that we can't keep it forever.
Well, maybe we could think about a different approach long term if we wanted to keep.
And what what I mean, yes, but what would that be?
I don't know. Well, just because those concrete barriers are so bulky, I wonder if there's something we could do that was a little bit less intrusive.
There are streets in Manhattan where there's not even any traffic whatsoever, so there must be a way.
Well, so I I can send you this article that was in the paper today. New York City is shutting down a bunch of the street stuff, uh, although also creating opportunities for some of it to continue. But I mean, the problem we have is that we've identified and acted on the locations where we can do it. But there are many other locations that would like to have it, but can't.
Well, we have Oktoberfest to look forward to.
I was gonna say, I think the thing that the thing that lots of bad things have come out of the pandemic for sure, and we've lost a lot of people. But one good thing that happened is that we rediscovered the outdoors. And people remember that they love to eat outside, that they love to walk outside, they love to do lots of things outside, and I don't want to lose that. I I would love to get towards a long-term vision of having more of the village be really pedestrian and not vehicular.
Yeah, me too. I think I agree with you, Peter, that this is not an opportunity that exists for all of the restaurants, but uh, you know, and I mentioned Oktoberfest, obviously that will be one evening, but, um, I think looking forward, it's a and I an opportunity to think creatively about ways to create opportunities for other businesses as well, other restaurants.
True.
Perhaps perhaps with the the civic space might also.
The restaurants on Bedford Road obviously are a a place where there there is really virtually no opportunity to do this. Cause it's first off a county road, but secondly, very loaded parking there and that parking is important to people. But so so for example, if you were to give up the parking that's on the on the, uh, side of Bedford Road between the Art of Wine and Jean Jacques, uh, most of the active restaurants are on the other side at the moment. But you would be knocking out parking that those folks, I think, consider to be central to their survival, so.
Although the good thing about that is the nature of not all of them, but many of those restaurants is that if we do create a civic space, that will actually be outdoor eating for them, so as them really take out restaurants.
And and one of the steps we've taken here in this mod provision of the South End of Memorial Plaza is to try to create easier, better and more better supply of transit parking in the South End there by Bedford Road for folks who want to do just that.
Uh, and the public parking under Seventy Memorial.
Right.
Off Cooley Street will be even closer.
And when Cooley Street is pushed through as a as a straight through two-way street, that that helps the as well. So look, there are lots of changes going on at the moment. Um, you know, I I just think we have to be mindful of the reality. I certainly have had people tell me it's time to get rid of those barriers because they find them, uh, to be in their way uh, of of their daily life. That's been, you know, anecdotal commentary, no, 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 uh, big chorus. But, you know, there are pros and cons there, but we got two businesses, three businesses that that we found a way to help and not looking to give up on them now, so. Everybody feel differently?
Yeah, we're well, if we're talking anecdotes, I I've never heard one complaint about.
So I I have, I mean, I I.
From anybody.
I live my life on Wheeler Avenue. I'm there. My day job office is there, so, um, uh, I I hear more about that.
Do you count when people yell up at your office or no?
So far, I, if people are yelling up, I don't listen.
That's good to know.
I have to say I'm I'm in support of it completely. Um, I would just ask, you know, are we the extension right now until is it until when?
We can extend up to six months.
So it's October, right?
Right.
So and I remember in Michael's email from Bella Kitchen, that's part of the record, I guess, right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so he had said that in his belief, he believed that if with this extra opening that he could somewhat catch up from all the business that was lost, which I think was was a very compelling point. Um, so that's why I was in agreement for both businesses. But I guess we'd have to look to see once October is up, you know, I would imagine we're gonna be back in this position again. And I'm not sure if, you know, how much longer we keep it open, cause then it just becomes more of like, this isn't really about COVID anymore. Now it's just an opportunity. So I think it's something that we do need to take a look at. Um, I know there's been talk through just in the chamber as well, if we did want to do more closings of the street on the weekends again. Um, just because keeping it that, you know, we're gonna have more restaurants, it's gonna be more of a pedestrian street. And having cars be there, it gets so congested that
Yeah.
on a Saturday or Friday night, it it becomes dangerous, especially, um, it it is a little bit darker at times. And that's why we had the lights for the Oktoberfest that we added extra, so that may be something to look at. But it does become a bit dangerous for, you know, just anyone walking out of the restaurants with kids and even just pulling out. Sometimes pulling out of those spots, if you go pick up something to eat, can be difficult because everyone parks on the side to pick up, you know, someone is doing pickup of their food. So I think it might be something that we're gonna need to look into for the safety of of the residents and the pedestrians in that we might need to make Saturday or Friday nights more of a pedestrian.
Yeah.
And and that's what many other towns or villages do anyway.
Right.
They close their main streets, uh, after a certain time. So I wouldn't want it to affect the businesses during the day that that rely on that. But you figure once five P M comes or something like that, if it's six, it really just becomes a restaurant. And being that it's summer, people can walk from one place to the other and all that. So I think it's something that we'll have to really look at, um, going forward.
Recording in progress.
Sorry, for some reason, I just.
Who wanted to get you on the record?
My connection. So, you know, the the just the point I want to make is, look, we're trying to help folks and certainly through this pandemic, I think everybody, including the other businesses have understood, everybody should, you know, we should find ways to help people when we can. Uh, when the pendulum is swung back and we're in regular life, uh, it will be hard to say we're gonna give one restaurant a benefit that ultimately draws people to it at the expense of a restaurant that can't have that benefit. And, you know, certainly I've had some version of that conversation with a couple of restaurants who say, hey, I get it, you know, those guys, you have a chance to help those guys, you should, but God, I wish you could help me, so.
I certainly think Paul's idea would go a long way towards, uh, changing the dynamic. I, the the feeling that you created, Paul, on Oktoberfest was so nice in the village. And just having families out walking, you know, uh, having that be the average Saturday, Friday and Saturday night after six or whatever in the village, I think would be great.
That'd be amazing.
Yeah, so what we need to do, we and and Paul, you and the chamber can be a, maybe the the best funnel to start pouring Mr. Oyster. Uh, as as we start to see things swing back to normal, especially the burns, uh, attendance swinging back to normal. What what would it look like? How would it work? And would restaurants and businesses support the idea of more pedestrian evenings? When we take whatever it is, the fifty, sixty parking spaces on Wheeler and take them out of service. Creates a, uh, a really nice scene, as has already been mentioned. It also takes that parking out of, I mean, it's it's, you've probably all seen the same thing I see. It's just human nature. Wheeler, most every night, good problem to have is packed, packed, packed. All the parallel spaces on the five minutes, this is the theoretical five minutes, on all the angle spaces. And and if you cross Bedford to the parking lot behind Lucy's is empty.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, nobody.
So, right, so again.
And also the the train station lot generally.
Yeah, now, but that's different from the circumstance that existed pre-COVID, where certainly on a Friday or Saturday, the train station lot was one hundred percent full, uh, into the evening.
Was that people going into the city?
No, no, I mean, one of the things was was, uh, restaurant employees coming into work in the after, after at the time, three P M it was free. Uh, you you would see literally at three o'clock, a big change. Now, obviously, we've not seen that, given the change dynamics, but, uh.
And the new regulations will probably.
Yeah, so, you know.
And lastly to add, I mean, I think we we want to start getting into the mindset that once, you know, the project on Memorial Plaza area, that building is fully made, that's gonna really be a walking, you know, a lot of people from there are gonna be driving over to Wheeler. And we'll be walking, you know, right over here. So
Right, right.
I think if we start kind of slowly progressing towards that, where it just becomes a norm, I think it could be a good way to kind of introduce that into the community and to make it more of a walking village, really downtown.
And to sort of offset the impact of, in some ways, of the development, right? To sort of, especially in a civic space, I think would be a really key key piece of that whole project. Because for one thing, it would bring together those two sides of Memorial Plaza.
Exactly.
Um, and then it would reinforce that sense of a vibrant, you know, walking downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will also say, and, you know, there's some regulatory pieces to the idea of, uh, you know, sort of the Oktoberfest scene being replicated many times. And that is, uh, alcohol consumption outdoors, wandering around, you know, so. You know, get that gets complicated from a, uh, SLA standpoint, but, you know, a bunch of, like, I don't know that they still do it. But Tarrytown used to do a first, was it First Tuesday or something? There was.
I know Tarrytown does a lot of stuff.
I thought it was on the weekend. I thought it was on.
First Friday. First Tuesday is not a thing.
Yeah, no.
Well, is it every Tuesday, Tuesday or something?
Tea total.
Now, now they say Thursday is part of the weekend, right? They're just trying to move it for the rest of the day. But anyway, all right, so, uh, if Steve Lord, I'm sure is not watching.
We could be Third Thursday if their first Friday.
He would approve.
Yes, he would be very pleased.
He came from, uh,
Which would quickly become Thursday.
the North Country, Burlington has a big pedestrian scene, so.
Right, and his wife is German, so obviously there's a lot of pedestrian areas.
All right, uh, with that, anything further on any of these subjects? So I think what's the bottom line? We should give Robert the guidance that.
I think.
I do have an update actually on Oktoberfest.
Okay.
We are, we're looking at it more right now as a Fall Fest. And we're looking at right now, uh, it's in discussion, yeah, we are looking at the date being, and I will hopefully I got this right. Um, October the first, which is a Saturday, with a rain date of October the second. Um, and we are in discussion also with the Pleasantville Fire Department, because they would like to evolve. And we're looking to see if we're able to do something where we also kind of close that part of Washington Avenue, um, which is starting from the Fire Department and down to to Dunkin' Donuts, and then we have Wheeler. So the Fire Department, um, just in the discussions we've had already with some of the members that are part of the committee, are looking to do something where they would have a fire engine and they could go to the Hays Department, you know, to activate that if they needed.
As a response site.
Exactly. So and it has been done, obviously, for Pleasantville Day, we closed that part of Wheeler Avenue, I mean, of Washington Avenue. So we know that it's it can be done. And then it could really be, um, there's talks of possibly having like, like a small car show on the top like the way that Rose Hill Shopping Center does, where it would be closer to the Fire Department. Um, they would park in the in the spots on the side. And that also gives a lot more business to all the Washington Avenue businesses that are right there. And it makes it a bigger event where people can be drawn to different parts of the street.
Oh, it sounds great.
So that's kind of where we're working on right now as well to present, um, I have three different people that are presenting ideas. And we're gonna compile it together and then present it to the village as, but that's something that we're looking at, is making it bigger in that way.
Great.
Getting all the important pieces of it and, uh, who we need to participate in. The Fire Department is one of the biggest ones. I need it, they need to be on our on our page with this because obviously they're a big part of that, so.
Have to have crossing guards at at Manville.
Exactly, yeah, we have to do that, exactly. So, yeah.
All right, well, that sounds great.
Well, we will have new pedestrian walkways hopefully as well.
Nice and green ones?
God willing. What do you think, Marcy? October one, will we?
Your lips to God's ears. I hope so.
All right, all right.
All right, with that, we depart. We thank you for your attention if you're still with us, which I think is nobody.
Abby's with us.
Abby's with us, Abby will.
Abby is with us. I didn't mean you were nobody. You're just, you know.
One of us.
You're one of us, yes. All right, we depart into executive session. Uh, thank you all. See you in two weeks on March twenty eight.